Okay, we're ready to go now. Welcome to the October 24th St. Charles County Council Meeting. We begin our meetings with invocation, so I'll ask you to please stand with that, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Joe Brazel.
Dear Father, we pray for wisdom and courage to overcome any obstacles during this meeting, and for your Spirit to guide our words and actions. We pray for your peace today, and let any negative moments be turned into opportunities to resolve our differences. In this we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Donna, what'd you call the role?
Councilmember Joe Brazel.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Ealem.
Here.
Councilmember Dave Hammond.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Cronin.
Here.
Councilmember Terry Hollander.
Here.
Councilmember Mike Klinghammer.
Here.
Councilmember John White.
Here.
Moving on to public presentations, I do not believe we have any this evening, is that correct?
Not that I'm aware of.
Okay. Moving on to public comments. In public comments, we ask you folks to please keep it to three minutes. Please state your name and address prior to speaking, and also please fill out a comment card at the table, so that we can contact you after the meeting if we have to. We do alternate back and forth between opposing and supporting viewpoints on particular items. So, please come up, sir.
Thanks for the opportunity to come before the council. I'm here to talk about the Fairgrounds Road Extension project. That report will, I understand, will be presented next month, on the 14th. Something interrupted that schedule. I think it's called deer hunting, so I will not be able to be here. But what I would really want to, before my time runs out, encourage all the council members to go back and read the minutes, and look at the videos that were presented, or that the county has, from the July, August, and September meetings. There was well over 200 people that responded, made comments, or just were at those meetings. And yet, the road board approved this Fairgrounds Road Extension against the will of the people. If you guys look at those minutes and the videos, you will see how sincere the people are that made these presentations. The meeting, I missed the August meeting, but the September meeting would not have ended until John Grexey got his way with the road board. He hammered the road board to make this possible, the Fairgrounds Road Extension. You can see it in that video, if you'll watch it. They were going to table the motion, he hammered on the tabling, they finally voted, and they voted on something that they didn't even really know about, because the city is going to make a realignment on this project. So the city did not have all their ducks in a row, and yet it was approved at that meeting. I really encourage you to take a real hard look at that, and do the will of the people. That's what government is all about, the will of the people. Nobody from the city, except staff, wanted this road to go through. Everybody else was opposed to it. I really sincerely wish that you would look at that, and I can, I'll miss next month because of deer season. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else who would like to speak about this topic? Anyone else here speak about any other topic before the council? Yes, sir?
I need to know my name.
Yes, sir.
Philip Myers.
Okay.
Address, or I don't remember, I had to say, 6868 Waymire Drive, Washington, Missouri, 63090. And I am here just to make a comment about conditional use permit, Bill Number 4385, which is for the Shearmark Quarry Expansion, or Extension. Since our last meeting, we have met with some of the parties, and I believe we've made the concessions that people wanted to see, as far as areas that we've conceded some ground to not use, coming up to their ground, and particularly Belchers', which was part of our contention, I think, last time. And I think we've got together, and we've worked out something that's okay for both of us, and I think we're both, we're fine on that. I also had sent some, a couple of letters that I think you guys have got, from a couple of the trucking companies that utilize us, asking that we continue. So, I will leave it at that. So I guess there's questions you can ask me later in the other part.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay, anyone here would like to speak in opposition to the quarry, since this gentleman brought up support of the quarry? Okay, see no one? Is there anyone else who would like to speak before any other man, or before the council tonight? Yes, sir, please come forward.
I'd like to speak on behalf of the traffic regulations on tonight's meeting. So I received an email from Carol Miller, on behalf of Council Chair Cronin, regarding the regulation of Bill 4396. There is actually three sections of that bill. One, it looks like there was two about stop signs, and then one about a no parking zone. I'm here in regards to the three-way stop sign at the intersection of Cambridge Crossing Drive and Bristol Bay Drive. So it looks like there was a study done last month by Craig Tachowski, and he actually ruled in favor of putting up a stop sign. I can just read a little blurb that he wrote in the email. So he says, "Cambridge Crossing Drive is a collector's street that draws great deal of cut-through traffic between Dingledine Road and Towers Road. Cut-through traffic is typically made up of drivers who do not live in the immediate area, and thus oftentimes fails to respect the fact that they are driving through a residential area. While it's not expected that this added stop sign will have a huge impact on speed, it should serve as a reminder to motorists coming off Dingledine that they are entering a subdivision environment, and that they should drive with the proper care and intention." So with that said, it looks like Craig, the county engineer, agrees for the stop sign. I came here last time and presented a petition with about 100 signatures of residents that are in favor of the stop sign. So if the council also agrees that we should put up a stop sign, I'd like to know what the next steps are, and maybe I can tell my neighborhood when they should expect a stop sign to come up.
We're going to vote on that this evening, and then Mr. Tachowski will work on getting that stop sign done.
Actually, it's up for introduction.
I'm sorry, we'll introduce it tonight, it'll be on the first meeting in November. It'll be up for final passage.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to speak on that subject tonight? Anyone else like to speak on any other subject before the council? Please come forward.
Hi, my name is Darrell Hosenger, I'm with Hosenger Trucking, and I'm here to talk about 43, well, Shearmark 140.
Eighty-five.
Forty-three eighty-five, thank you. Anyway, we have been, our company has been working with, at Shearmark Quarry, off and on with, having my dad from back in the 60s, and I've been hauling there for about 35 years myself. And just to, here in support, Phil and his wife, since they've taken over, they've seemed to do everything the right way and everything, and I just wanted to show my support in them, and I think they've done everything right. I've been around quarries since I've been a little kid, and we'd be lost without them for everything in our industry, so that's basically all I want to say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else this evening? Mr. Deanoff.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, members of the county council, Arnie Deanoff, public advocate and resident. Couple things I want to go over the agenda, or, one is the approval of purchases involving facilities. We have a number of tradespeople that are on our staff in the facilities department. I'd like to see a lot more in-house projects, saving taxpayer money. You want to install carpet and vinyl wall base to the tune of $50,000, but we have carpenters that are in-house assigned to the Department of Facilities, and I think we need to utilize those tradesmen, and save taxpayer dollars in the amount of probably at least $25,000 by doing it in-house, and just buying the materials. The second thing on the agenda is the approval or acquisition of two surplus Humvee vehicles from the State of Missouri Surplus Department. I have some questions about the acquisition of these two Humvee vehicles. Number one, what is the cost of taxpayers for the maintenance? What is the cost and availability of parts? And I want to also make sure this county council sends a clear message, that as the chief's memo stated, I want to make sure that there's no role of these Humvees in any law enforcement operations, and their sole purpose is to help people out in emergencies, such as floods or evacuations. Bill Number 4390 relates to the county park regulations. It was talked about last time by the county council. I have sincere reservations about the Director of Administration and the Parks Director trying to take away control and take away rules and regulations, which is the auspice of the county charter, and your obligation, which are paid, over close to $16,000 plus benefits and a pension, but keep control over the Parks Department, and don't be giving away those basic administrative rules over the citizens. Bill Number 4393 applies to fees for the application of concealed carry permits. This legislation only applies to St. Charles County residents who go to other states, except Illinois. In terms of the legislature over ruling the objection of the governor's veto, there are no fees that apply to any St. Charles County citizens, and you're allowed to carry and conceal a weapon where you feel it's needed and warranted. Getting back to the treatment of county employees, which I spoke about two weeks ago, especially the women and other employees that we have with health-related issues. You know, the buck stops to my, to the two tables to my right with the administration, and I think it's high time that they stand up for these employees, and make sure that discrimination of our employees will not be tolerated in St. Charles County. There have been several settlements in recent months, there have been several complaints brought to the Director of Administration and the County Executive.
Please wrap it up, sir.
And this discrimination just will not be tolerated. In the election authority, there was a new lawsuit that was filed about three weeks ago, and I asked that the county investigate this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else here like to speak about anything else before the council, or anything else of any matter with the county? Okay, see none. We're going to move on to the oral report from the County Executive.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Betty Yan Kramer, I believe, has a report she'd like to make, and I'm told it's all good news.
Thank you, County Executive. Well, gentlemen, members of the council, tonight you are going to see the planning culmination of an off-and-on 15-year conversation slash discussion with the former owners of the property that lies between Pittman Hill Road and Kisker Road. Before we start with that, I want to give a quick thanks, though, because we've had a lot of folks working on this project, and we have several members of our park advisory board here tonight, and I'd remind you that they are volunteers, residents of the county who are volunteers. Mr. Bob Wohler and Larry Henderson are here tonight, representing that advisory board. I want to thank Corey Baxter Mueller, who has been in on all of our planning meetings, and approaching it from that construction management perspective. The park staff that we've had working with this project as well, and the executive branch, all of whom have worked diligently to effect this project. SWT Design of St. Louis is the lead on the design and engineering team that we have working. But I'd like, again, just to do a very quick overview. We started this project with a public meeting, to take input from public in that Pittman-Kisker area, but we also sent out a survey, and we had over 3,800 responses to that public survey. The top five choices that they had, that they thought were very important to include in a new park area, were incorporated, and along with other additions as well, from some key stakeholders who had suggestions. So the plan was formulated, all the while keeping it within budget. It's been a challenge, because there's some major easements that go across this property, without a doubt. There's including a cross-country gas pipeline, there's two major electric utilities, and a number of Duckett Creek projects that are there as well. But with rolling hills topography, let me just tell you, there was very little acreage that was considered flat, and so you're going to see on the presentation here shortly, the cost for some major earth moving. There's a floodway area that's designated for the Baltic Creek Waterway, which also transacts the property from south to north. But again, the whole idea was to stay within the $9 million that's budgeted for this park project. The design team is incorporating some infrastructure planning for future additions, as more funding might become available, but for right now, we're on track and within budget. So without further ado, I'm going to ask the SWT representative to come up and show the plans for the newest regional county park, which is remarkably in the proverbial golden triangle of St. Charles County. So with that, Jay, would you please come?
Thank you, Betty, and good evening, members of the council. I appreciate the time to be here this evening. And just to follow up on Betty's comment about this really being a team effort, SWT Design is the lead design firm. With me this evening, I'm Jay Wolchleger, a partner with SWT Design. Also is Jim Wolterman, who's one of the founding partners of SWT, and Klaus Rausch, who's one of the senior associates, and was a design leader on this park project. We also have a great team of engineers that support us as well, part of the team with Horner Schifrin Engineering and SCI Engineering. So it really has been with the Parks and Recreation staff, and our team, really a team effort to get to this point. So, we wanted to start with just an understanding of, you know, the park site itself. As Betty had mentioned, it's sort of in that golden triangle of the county, located between Pittman Hill Road on the west side of the site, and Kisker Road on the east side of the park site. In total, it's 120 acres, and the park project that we're looking at focuses on roughly 90 acres between Pittman and Kisker. The overall plan, and the sort of the vision for the park, was set, as Betty mentioned, by the public, input from the public, from stakeholders, and it was really driven, or designed into a master plan vision by the park staff, at which time our team was engaged to help take that vision, take that input that was received, and really create a park that provides that county park experience, but in a much more suburban setting than your typical St. Charles County park. So that was the driver for the vision and the elements in the park. Betty mentioned budget, we have a $9 million budget, and as she mentioned, we are tracking on budget. We have a summary of the costs to date on it up here for you. If you look at it, the top three elements that are listed there are that sort of infrastructure and groundwork necessary to provide a public park, and also to set the park on course for any future development or additions to that park. And then below those top three, the earthwork utilities, the entry drives and roads, and the maintenance building and yard. Then below all of that is the list of the program elements, driven by that public input and those stakeholder input, to develop that program and that vision for the park. So, at the bottom line there, you can see we're tracking really close to that $9 million budget for the park at this point. Some of the program elements that we wanted to highlight for you this evening, relating back to that input and that vision from the community. When we talk about trails, trails was one of the top priorities, it was the number-one priority from the input. The park includes a 1.6-mile perimeter loop trail, which is the dark red line you see around the park itself. And then there's a series of internal trails and connections that link the amenities to that major, to that perimeter loop, and allow for smaller loops as well. The perimeter trail does connect to Kisker Road along the east side at the main entry to the park, as well as to Pittman Hill on the west side, so public access into the park can come off of those two major roads. We're also, from the trail standpoint, on the north edge of the site, and the east edge of the site, and really the south edge of the site, we're using earth berms and landscape to buffer the trail from the neighboring, or really to buffer the neighboring residences from the trail and the park in key locations. Another program item is the lake, so another one that came in on that public input. We have, really, we have one lake that totals just over four acres. As you see here, it's divided into two, and it's related to that gas line easement, that gas line and the easement associated with it that Betty mentioned. That gas line runs right through the site, through here, so in coordination with Enbridge and the gas line company, we've worked out the design to sort of split the lake into two water bodies. So, we put together a series of renderings as we go through some of these program items, to sort of give you a feel for where we envision these elements and these program items to look like. So, this is a view from, an overlook that's part of the destination playground, looking out to sort of the northeast, so the north is sort of straight ahead, so we're looking out to the northeast, over the lakes, so you can see the North Lake there on the top of the image, and the South Lake here on the lower edge. So, you can see how the trail and the lake edge and the landscape all sort of come together to create this, the park amenity. Along with the parks, there was a desire for open sort of fields, for playfields within the park. Knowing the topography that we have, really sort of sloping from east to west, the northeast corner, sorry, the northwest corner of the park is the most level of the areas, the flattest of the park site. So, we have right around six acres of relatively level, open green space, or field space that can be used for practices, for soccer, other activities, as well as open play, flying kites, throwing a ball. The rest of it, there is also significant green space elsewhere in the park, but it has, you know, the topography, the slope of the land makes it difficult to do programmed or game-type elements, but it's perfect for kites, frisbees, you know, laying on the hillside having a picnic, so. But these are the sort of programmable, usable spaces for open play. Along with the recreation elements and program elements, we, there was a desire for picnic areas, and along with those and the other program, there's a need for the support facilities to go with that. So, from a building standpoint, or a structure standpoint in the park, starting at the north end of the park, there's a restroom to support that open field area. There's a, towards the center, sort of the heart of the park, is where the playground is, it's also where we have what we're calling the signature shelter, which is a shelter for about 100 people, for picnicking, but also for special events that may occur in the park, has a view down to the lake. And then, there's a restroom that supports that shelter and the destination playground. And then the south end of the park contains another shelter, or a 50-person shelter with a restroom, and then that's also where the maintenance facility for the park is located as well. A couple of images that relate to that signature shelter, so it's really about creating that experience, and then be part of that identity for the park. There's the parking lot there on the west edge, so on the upper right of the corner of the image, leading out to that destination signature shelter, that looks, that overlooks down to the lake, and then the insert in the corner there is a bit of a perspective that shows, we have an element referred to as the heritage garden, that you will enter through to get to that signature shelter. So that image shows the parking lot, and how you would walk into and access that signature The park entry is an important component of the park, it sort of creates the identity, and sort of sets the tone, lets people know where that entry is. It's along Kisker Road on the east side, very close to where the existing gate is into the property, if you're familiar with where that is. So when we look at that, it's really creating that sense of identity in place along Kisker, and really tying it into the context of the neighborhood and the community, and setting the tone for the park. So, there'll be the entry drive, the potential, we're looking at using a split-rail fence with some columns to create and denote that entry, and then there'll be a sign element at that point as well, letting people know that that's the entry to the park. And then there's a three-acre dog park, right as you come into the park, sort of the southeast corner of the park, in close proximity to the maintenance facility, but also proximity to parking that southern shelter, that south shelter and restroom, so that south restroom supports the dog park. So on the image here, the dog park is this area right in here, as I mentioned, it's about three acres, and it'll be divided into small dog, large dog areas, with a small shelter for shade in each one, and then a controlled entry gate for that dog park as well. The final program element is the destination playground, located in the heart of the park, in relationship to the signature shelter and that supporting restroom. It's really a destination element, an inclusive playground for the park, centered around the existing silo that's out on the site, it's the one structure that's being retained for the park. And that becomes, it's at the top of a hill, and the playground will sort of work its way down that hill below that silo. So the silo sits here, the parking lot, just to the east of that, so for access to the playground, with sort of a paved terrace area around the silo, and then a loopwalk that encircles the playground area itself. And the playground is made up of a series of rooms, interconnected rooms, that have different play activities, and we've got a little more information on that here, as we go forward. But a real driver for the playground was to create an inclusive play experience, and the idea with an inclusive play is it's more than just being an accessible playground, it's more than just providing a sidewalk and some surfacing that people can get to the playground, but it's about providing an experience where individuals, no matter their abilities or their disabilities, can be engaged and have an opportunity to gain benefits that are social benefits, physical benefits, sensory benefits, cognitive benefits, and communicative benefits. So it's really about interacting and having the ability to really experience that play environment, no matter age, ability, it's looking at universal and inclusive design, and that's how we approached the playground and the elements, as we selected them. So, we went through, and working with staff, and from a design standpoint, we identified all of the individual play components that would be in the playground, and looking at those elements, or those tenants of inclusive play, of social, physical, sensory, cognitive, and communication, we really selected and identified the play pieces that met those benefited those benefits to users within the playground. And so, a little bit of sort of context, and how those come together, within the play environment as well, but also that image that we showed previously of the lakes, this is that boardwalk element that looked out over the lake when you get to this point. So it starts up at the silo, it's a fully accessible and inclusive experience to get out over the playground, so you're above the playground, looking down into the playground, there's some play elements that attach to it, but then there's a tree line that sort of separates this upper field from the lower field where the lake is, and this overlook will sort of push through the tree canopy at about 15 to 20 feet in the air, and you'll be able to, you'll have that view out over the lakes as part of this playground experience. So, the playground itself, as I mentioned, is composed of a series of rooms, of playrooms. This is the two-to-five-year-olds, so the smaller children play area, and the sound play area. So, from an amenity and a play component standpoint, there's access off of this, off of the silo terrace, onto a play structure, there's a roller hillside slide, a series of inclusive play components, and then the sound play is also an interactive experience for children, families, all individuals using the playground. using the playground. There's a water play, an interactive water experience that both provides an inclusive experience from different opportunities along the play. It's sort of nestled in below the silo with water coming out of sort of the rock, the boulder walls. There's an interactive element that's both initiated down below when you're in the water play experience and also if you're up above at the silo. And then all that water works its way out of the playground and down underneath the walk, down to another play area where you can engage and play with the water in a more natural setting. And then it's taken into a drain, it's daylighted within the woodland in a vegetated area that helps filter and clean the water. And that water then recharges the lake and goes into the lake. At the bottom of the hill, as you're working your way down from the silo, is the adventure play area of the playground with a large net climbing structure that is a social activity from an inclusion standpoint that allows people to get in and around and up into that experience, as well as engaging. This is the overlook and there's a slide and a climber associated with that element. Everybody loves swings. It's a priority when you hear about playgrounds. And so, we have a swing area, area dedicated to swings with four bays of swings. One of those swings at the end here is what's called an expression swing. It's where an adult or a caregiver and a child can sit facing each other and swing back and forth. And so, instead of just standing behind and pushing, you can actually be a part of that experience. And then we have several of the inclusive, sort of the molded plastic seats that provide that support. And then two bays of your more traditional belt and bucket swings as part of that play experience. There's also a hillside slide and an opportunity to run and engage the silo as well as the overlook from the swing area. You can go up the hillside here, onto that platform or down the other side, back into the other play experiences. From a project schedule, we're here this evening to provide an update on the progress. Our schedule has us going out to bid with the project package next Thursday, the 3rd of November, with a deadline for bids to be submitted December 8th. That's a five-week bid window with Thanksgiving, we get Thanksgiving in there. And our desire is to come back in the first meeting in January with a recommendation for a contractor, a contractor for the project, and then begin work, if not late January, most likely early February, with the completion date of late 2017. And then this is just an overview of the playground and that whole central area of the park. So, that's an update on the new park and sort of the program and the direction that it's moving forward to go out to bid. And we're really excited about where it's going and can't wait to see it implemented, so.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Your client is St. Charles County. This is the county council, not the city council.
Did I say city council?
That was on your slide.
I think it was abbreviated.
Oh, I apologize for that.
It's fine.
Are there any questions from the council regarding this gentleman?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
I think it'd be a good idea when we do presentations, if it was given to us. I know it's the first time you were here, so it's hard to see up there and you had a lot of printing that was on there as well. No idea what any of it said, so please send us all a copy of this so that we can know what we're buying.
Sure.
Okay?
Understand, yes.
I would like to ask, this park's 120 acres. This is 90. Is the other 30 for reserve down the road or what are we doing with that, the other 30, Betty?
It is, excuse me. It is, with the money that we have available, we thought we would concentrate on this larger section. And the section that is on that west, or it'd actually be more the south side of the Pittman will be for future development. We're thinking right now, just short-term, is putting some frisbee golf in, disc golf in over on that side, but really concentrating on this big main piece.
Get the big chunk done first and look at the little chunk later.
Correct.
And the only other question I had, is the structural integrity of that silo good? Because that thing's old and that thing would hurt if it fell on somebody's head.
We've had structural engineers assess it and they're, we're making some modifications to it to ensure the structural integrity of it, but overall, it's almost 100 years old and it's, actually it's over 100 years old, I believe, and it's still in, structurally it's in very good shape.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
Betty, do you know when you can have a five-year plan for us that we were talking about months ago where we have outlier, a delay of what, if there's any more purchases, what the parks we're going to expand on and the budgetary amounts? So, we have at least a five-year plan for forecasting?
You bet. It has been worked on and reworked and reworked and I think we're on our eighth chapter of it, so, yes, there will be another version here for you all shortly.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say...
Yes, sir.
We're very excited. We're hoping everyone will come out and play.
It's a nice-looking park.
All right, thank you.
Okay, moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to remove from the consent agenda this evening?
Yeah, Joe, I'd like to remove the part about the flooring and cove base.
Second.
Second.
Okay, then we'll move on to, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Okay, all in favor of approving the consent agenda except for the item that was removed?
Motion to approve the balance.
Yes, motion to approve the balance?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda passes except for the carpet. Mr. Brazel, I'm sorry, Mr. Klinghammer, would you tell us, would you like to be in the discussion of that?
Yep, I did notice that it went out to bid and it went out for, they kind of projected forward, it looks like, for three years about the materials that they might be needing. And I guess my question was, why, why in this, it's a relatively small, non-complicated thing, why did we decide to go out for three years?
I'm sorry, why go for three years?
Right.
I think it's really been more that that's what they've done, each of them, that they've brought to you all have been a three-year bid. We can...
Yeah, I just, when we only have one bidder on it and he's got price increases each year of between 8 and 10%, I'd feel a lot more comfortable with just doing it for a year. And then finding out why our local guys don't want to bid on it. I just, I'd really like to slow down and just talk to them, find out, this isn't complicated stuff. This is pretty easy. It's carpet squares and cove base. I saw that the purchasing department did a very good job. They contacted several of our local retailers that are more than qualified to do the work. Before we give a three-year contract, I'd like to slow down for a little bit and just find out why they chose not to respond.
Bob, do you know, is it, do we have the right to cancel this after a year?
I don't think it has a cancellation provision. I think it is for a three-year term. I don't think those are option prices, but the bid that you had there before you is a replacement bid for a bid that was let in 2013. So, we had a three-year run. The scope of this project is a little undefined at this point. This is for work that we will have come up in the next three years. We don't know exactly how much it's for and amount on your agenda of at least $50,000 because that's what we expect to spend over the three-year period, but...
You said at least, or did you mean at most?
I'm sorry?
You said at least, or did you mean at most?
At least.
Not to exceed.
No, it's at least three, it's at least $50,000.
But not to exceed $50,000?
No.
No, it may go over...
No, we don't know, honestly. I mean, we're talking about projects that could come up over the next three years and we want to have the pricing in place to get them done. So, that's been the methodology we've used and it's worked out well when we have a project come up. We have pricing that has been determined via, in this case, a bid where Stevens Flooring was the only company to respond to the bid.
Couple of things. It is a 12-month contract with one-year renewals on top of each of those.
I stand corrected.
That's in page nine of 16 of the bid. And then we do know what we're going to spend next year. If you'll see the capital plan you approved, we've got the projects listed out as to where we're doing carpet. It exceeds $50,000 and we do it as that per...
In next year?
In next year. In next year only.
I'm confused then when this talks about $50,000. The way it's presented, it would appear that the estimate is $50,000 over the next three years.
It says over $50,000, which is why we're bringing it to you. So, we may not end up doing a particular renovation project, may not get to like hallway carpeting, for instance, next year. But since we do it on a per-square-foot cost and we know we're going to spend more than 50, we bring it to you for approval. Otherwise, each of these individual projects would never show up on your desk because they'd all be under the threshold. So, we bring it to you so that you can see the total per-square-footage contract cost and be able to make that decision on it once, otherwise it wouldn't come to you at all.
I have some reservations too. When you have a very common commodity like carpeting, okay, and you have dozens and dozens of places in this county that sell it and you only get one bidder and that bidder's from St. Louis County, to me, that's indicative of something's wrong with the process. The other thing I don't like, I don't like the paying, the automatic 10% price increases to the labor costs in the contract. And then also, I was always told these contracts, you don't specify brand because when you specify brand, you really narrow the opportunities. This, in the bid specifications, it's got a Bigelow brand and I didn't like that either. I mean, you can specify the thread count or the poundage or whatever, it's a specification for carpet, but this specifically specifies Bigelow brand modular carpet tiles.
We bid a brand so that we can stop deploying what we've been doing, which is piecemeal replacements where if you stand in one location, you see seven different carpet patterns. So, we've selected a single carpet package that we know that particular pattern's likely to be available for a period of five to eight years if we get lucky. And at least we can then try and keep it to that one color and continue to install that everywhere so that when we buy a box and we've got 50 extra squares, it's interchangeable in any given location for replacement when we have stains.
Did anyone call the, you know, some of the, we have some pretty large carpets companies in this county. Anybody call them and say, why did you not bid on this?
Well, we can follow up with Kurt Mandernack, who is the specific purchasing manager, but we made a very significant attempt this year to get bidders. So, we'll follow back up and see what his notes were as to why we didn't have any success.
How many of the people that were notified, you got quite a few of them on here, are actual Bigelow distributors? Do we know that?
I don't know that offhand.
Because if there weren't, if, how do we, is this company a bid, the only distributor of that carpet?
I don't know that you have to necessarily be a particular distributor. It's my understanding...
But some manufacturers don't let you carry their, they don't...
Well, we can find out. I don't know, Joe. I really don't. And, you know, we put our best effort out there to try to get a competitive bid and, you know, I'm not sure why. I don't have the answers for you at this point. If you have enough reservations about it, table it and we'll get you some answers.
Okay. I recommend a motion to table this.
I second the motion to table until the next meeting.
All in favor of keeping this item tabled?
Aye.
Opposed? We'll keep it tabled. Okay, moving on for bills for final passage, Bill Number 4385.
Bill Number 4385, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 16-07 for a rock quarry to Kathleen Kling, property owner and Michael Holdings LLC applicant.
I'd like to recommend substitute bill 4385. Make a motion, please.
Second.
All in favor of substitute bill Number 485?
Aye.
Okay, read substitute bill 485.
Substitute bill Number 4385, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 16-07 for a rock quarry to Kathleen Kling, property owner and Michael Holdings LLC applicant.
Questions or comments regarding Bill 4385? Mr. Brazel?
Yeah, just so you guys all know, the, there were some neighbors that were concerned. The property owner, the quarry owner gave the requested setbacks and it does say in the ordinance that it shall be no extraction, disturbance, storage of excavated materials or debris. So, they're undisturbed setbacks. The, Mr. Meyer and the property owners walked it and talked about it and compromised on it. So, I think this is a very fair compromise to make everyone happy. They're, on the petition, Mr. Belcher was the one who walked around the community to have people sign the petition. And a lot of, I called five of the people that were on the list and they were signing it just to be polite. They weren't objective, they weren't objecting to the quarry. As you all know, the quarry's been there 60 years and so, there's a lot of truck companies, Porky sent in a letter and Well shoots and this gentleman over here. So, it supports a lot of families and it's important. When you talk about truck traffic, the problem if that quarry closes down, the people aren't going to stop construction projects, they're not going to stop building, it's going to continue. And so, that, all that means is the trucks are going to go through defiance and go to Fred Weber. So, it's just going to put truck traffic on for longer distances. So, that quarry is needed in that part of the county. It's the most southwest portion of the county. And gravel prices would go up considerably if, by, from the hauling fee. So, it's important to have that quarry in that community. So, I'm in favor of it.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? I think we'll move on with this.
Substitute bill Number 4385, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 16-07 for a rock quarry to Kathleen Kling, property owner and Michael Holdings LLC applicant. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill 4385 passes. Moving on to Bill 4386.
Bill Number 4386, an ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 16-08 for boat and boat trailer storage to Timothy E. Cantwell, trustee of the Timothy E. Cantwell Trust, dated March 9, 2007, property owner and Scott Cantwell applicant.
Questions and comments regarding Bill 4386? Seeing none?
An ordinance granting conditional use permit CUP 16-08 for boat and boat trailer storage to Timothy E. Cantwell, trustee of the Timothy E. Cantwell Trust, dated March 9, 2007, property owner and Scott Cantwell applicant. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes. Bill Number 4386 passes. Moving on to Bill 4387.
Bill Number 4387, an ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute documentation for acceptance of a supplementary funding approval under an existing grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA to fund 100% of the projected total costs of acquiring and demolishing three residential structures sustaining severe and repetitive loss in flood hazard zones of unincorporated St. Charles County.
Questions or comments regarding Bill 4387? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive or his designate to execute documentation for acceptance of a supplementary funding approval under an existing grant from the Federal Emergency Management Agency FEMA to fund 100% of the projected total costs of acquiring and demolishing three residential structures sustaining severe and repetitive loss in flood hazard zones of unincorporated St. Charles County. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Bill 4387 passes. Moving on to Bill 4388.
Bill Number 4388, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to allow county access to the state's vital records and information technologies.
Questions or comments regarding Bill 4388? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services to allow county access to the state's vital records and information technologies. Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Bill 4388 passes. Moving on to Bill 4389, I would like to mention that there's amendment to this lease was not included in the packet for introduction. It has been added to the packet and this is now ready for a vote.
Bill Number 4389, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to building and premises lease for airport space.
Questions and comments regarding Bill Number 4389? Seeing none?
An ordinance authorizing the execution of an amendment to building and premises lease for airport space. Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer? Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Bill number 4389 passes.
Moving on to Bill number 4390.
Bill number 4390, an ordinance amending sections 250.060, 250.260, and 250.500 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO relating to county park regulations.
I'd like to make a motion to amend Bill number 4390 and replace it with substitute bill number 4390.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, Bill number 4390 has been replaced by substitute bill 4390. Questions and comments regarding substitute bill 4390?
I got some questions.
Okay.
I thought I, maybe I didn't relay my information correctly through Donna or Carol, but this isn't what we talked about at the last meeting. If you look at this bill, it says, "The director shall submit a proposed rate schedule to the director administration." It says in here over and over again that it will be reproved by the director of administration. We had talked about the council approving the rates. And at least, if not put on the ordinance, it would be by consent agenda. I don't think it says that in here anywhere. That's the way I would want to see it. Now, I won't approve that. You guys can vote on it, but I don't support this as stands.
Members of the council, I do believe there's a substitute bill that doesn't reflect what you're looking at, Joe. One of the best attorneys around, I'm going to have address this, because he worked hard to address your concerns from the last meeting.
Which one did we, it's not on our screen, though.
I believe you have a paper copy of it.
It's in your folder. It's in your folder.
So, this was just given tonight, right?
No.
It was emailed to you Friday.
Friday?
Yes.
Mr. Dorment, could you just explain this, the changes, please?
Yeah. So, that whole scheme, Mr. Brazel, that was in the original bill, was delete, is deleted in the substitute bill. The substitute bill just incorporates two rate tables. One for the admissions fees, which is Exhibit A, and then one for the facility rental fees and damage deposits, which is Exhibit B. These two tables really only took all of the existing park fees and put them into table form. They didn't charge, or, excuse me, they didn't change any of the fees that are currently being charged, with one very notable exception, and that is the Lindenwood Park, you know, facility with the Boone home. You have both different types of facilities that the Parks Department really hasn't had before, that very large shelter and the chapel, for examples, for facility rental. And then you had a different type of admission for the Boone home tours itself. So, those are just in these tables and would then, under the substitute bill, if that is approved, be a part of the county's ordinances, just like all the existing park fees. The only difference as far as fee setting between existing practices and what is in the substitute bill is that the director of Parks and Recreation would have the authority to set temporary fees for new facilities that are not covered in these existing tables for a period of 90 days. And that's just to, you know, with the idea that, you know, the park system still continues to grow, and sometimes with the process that it takes to get the ordinances amended, you can run into situations possibly in the future where they need to bring a facility online before they have the chance to get all the way through the council process.
Greg, what page covers how Exhibit A and B will be changed for rate increases at some point in the future?
The, well, there is nothing that sets forth, I mean, process for how it gets changed in the future, because the fees are set in ordinance, you know, will be set in the ordinance.
So, the only way to change those would be to amend the ordinance of 4390?
That's exactly right.
That's fine.
So, then, I, you know, we just kind of, you know, talked internally and figured that whatever rate change was being advocated for at some future time could be, you know, the supporting information could be brought before council on each individual case.
It's a lot easier to read.
Yeah.
Yeah. Essentially, the rate tables will be approved by the council annually. Does the, no?
No. You would pass, if substitute bill passes, you would just be setting the rate tables as part of the ordinances, and these would be the rates until such future times they're changed. There isn't a lot of, historically, there's not a lot of change in these. So, that's why we, you know, wrote it the way that we did, just to, you know, set it once and for all in the, or to keep that same system where it's set in the ordinances, because we really haven't had to come back for changes. But we'll have to come back for new facilities or, you know, new types of facilities.
Does 90 days give you enough time?
Yes.
That does.
Yes.
And would you specifically tell us where it states that this is approved by the county versus the administration? I didn't, a lot of pages this thing.
Well, page two, for example, is the section one, well, it's within section 250060 subsection D. That is how the membership fees are being approved. And it merely says that, you know, parks will be open to the public without admissions fees except for the facilities or areas for which admissions fees are listed in the following table. And then Exhibit A is the table. So.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I think, I think the question is, it doesn't have to say it, because it's in the ordinance, which we have to live with, until they change it.
That's, yeah, that's right.
It doesn't have to say, "You get to change it."
Right.
Unless the, unless the ordinance says, "We get to change it, you get to change it." You have to change it.
So, we're approving it in this format.
Is that your question, Mr. Chairman?
I think, so we're approving it in this format, and it will take a subsequent council action to approve it, to make changes. Correct?
Yes, with the exception of that temporary 90-day authority.
No, that's fine. I just got a question. Betty, on the campground, is Klondike the only campground we have, or are there multiple campgrounds?
We have a, we have a youth group camping area up in Indian Camp Creek that's primarily scouts that use that. Klondike is the only facility we have that has the camper cabins and then the 41 sites for tent camping.
Is the, the camping, isn't it, it's always booked, isn't it? Like 100%?
Pretty much.
My question is, is, and I'm just asking this, is this sustainable? These fees seem extremely low for that. Is it sustainable?
You know, we look at the varying, like, state park fees and, like, what they charge at Quiver River and so on, and we're very comparable. It is sustainable. A tent campsite is a fire ring and a cleared area. A picnic table is at the improved site. So, it's not a lot of impact as far as sustainability.
Okay. Okay. Any other questions, comments? Okay, at this point in time, I guess we move forward.
Substitute bill number 4390, an ordinance amending sections 250.060, 250.260, and 250.500 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO relating to county park regulations. Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Yes.
Bill 4390 passes. Moving on to Bill 4391.
Bill number 4391, an ordinance setting the 2017 rates for group medical insurance benefits with Aetna Life Insurance Company, formerly Coventry Healthcare of Missouri Incorporated, Davis Vision, and dental insurance benefits with Lincoln Financial Group for county employees, elected officials, and retirees.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to amend, amend Bill 4391 and replace it with substitute bill 4391.
Second.
All in favor of replacing Bill number 4391 with substitute bill number 4391?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So, we're now discussing Bill 4391. Questions or comments regarding, I'm sorry, substitute bill 4391? Questions, comments? Nope?
More of a curiosity. I mean, it's all great news that the rates went down from, most of them went down from where it was originally, but did another company come in with a different bid, or what happened?
Bob? Bob grabbed him by the ankles and shook a little harder and got a little better deal.
Well, just to clarify, we don't have premiums that were charged by an outside company. We're completely self-insured.
Right.
So, these premiums are premiums that were set originally when we went to a self-insured format back in 2003. And each year, after the tweaking of these, those initial rates for those different premium categories that you see, they were tweaked for the first couple of years to match to our claim experience for each of those categories. And then after 2000, from 2007 on, we've been applying kind of across the board percentage increases. This year, it's 3% to the employees, and the county is picking up 6%. But we pay for the medical claims. The actual medical claims that are sustained each week by our employees are passed on to us to pay. So, there's no premium that we pay to an Aetna or to, you know, Coventry. Coventry is really just our third-party claims administrator. They handle all the claims that our employees turn into their various providers. So, no, I didn't shake anybody by the, by the boots to get the numbers down. The numbers that were originally introduced to you at the beginning of the month were actually just incorrect. They were, they were entered as, as part of a set of rates that were under another assumption. The rates that you see now before you in this bill are the, are the rates that are based on our historic methodology of a certain percentage increase each year in the county portion of premiums and the employee portion of premiums. So, the numbers that you see here are the numbers that are calculated under the methodology that we've always used.
Okay.
Okay, I think we're ready to move on. Bill number 4391.
Substitute bill number 4391, an ordinance amending the 2017 rates for group medical insurance benefits with Aetna Life Insurance Company, formerly Coventry Healthcare of Missouri Incorporated, Davis Vision, and dental insurance benefits with Lincoln, with Lincoln Financial Group for county employees, elected officials, and retirees. Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Bill 4391 passes. Moving on to Bill 4392.
Bill number 4392, an ordinance amending the 2016 budget adopted as ordinance 15-117 by making a supplemental appropriation from the general fund, road and bridge fund, assessment fund, parks fund, and emergency communication fund budgets for healthcare claims and prescription drug costs for 2016 in the self-insurance fund.
Questions and comments regarding Bill 4392? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending the 2016 budget adopted as ordinance 15-117 by making a supplemental appropriation from the general fund, road and bridge fund, assessment fund, parks fund, and emergency communication fund budgets for healthcare claims and prescription drug costs for 2016 in the self-insurance fund. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Bill 4392 passes. Moving on to Bill 4393.
Bill number 4393, an ordinance amending section 200.050 of chapter 200 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO relating to fees for applications for concealed carry permits.
Questions or comments regarding Bill 4393? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending section 200.050 of chapter 200 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO relating to fees for applications for concealed carry permits. Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Bill 4393 passes. Moving on to Bill 4394.
Bill number 4394, an ordinance amending sections 205.010, 205.020, 205.062, 205.120, 205.140, 205.142, and 205.145 of chapter 205 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, animal regulations.
Questions or comments regarding Bill 4394? Seeing none?
An ordinance amending sections 205.010, 205.020, 205.062, 205.120, 205.140, 205.142, and 205.145 of chapter 205 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO, animal regulations. Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Elam?
Yes.
Bill 4394 passes. That concludes bills for final passes. Moving on to bills for introduction. Bill number 4395.
Bill number 4395, requested by Mike Elam, sponsored by Mike Elam, and ordinance with penalty provisions creating new section 307.200 ordinances of St. Charles County, Missouri, OSU CMO relating to a new parking provision specifically parking near a public or private mailbox.
Mr. Elam, would you please, please explain your bill.
So, it turns out that I have a couple of neighbors in my district that are feuding. And one of the neighbors decided that he has an abandoned vehicle or a vehicle that he doesn't use, and he's going to park it in front of his neighbor's mailbox, which most of us thought was illegal, a federal offense. And we thought the feds handled that reinforcement. So, she called, told the post office. The post office said, "Call your local law enforcement and tell them." So, we found out that there's nothing on the books that says you can't do that. So, what the post office does is they stop delivering your mail. So, this lady has had to go to the post office to pick up her mail. So, the sheriff brought this to my attention, and, because she reached out to him first because she knows him, and talked to Chief Todd, and he's like, "We can fix that."
We deal, we deal with, the sheriff, we deal with law, sometimes by accident, or sometimes they just park it like tough. There's nothing we can do about it. And if people get the nasty nose, or they don't get their mail. So, this would certainly assist us in doing our job, helping all the citizens.
And I'm understanding most of the cities in the county have similar ordinances, in fact.
They do, but we don't. So, this would actually give us the power to enforce.
In unincorporated.
Exactly.
Shame it comes to that. It's a shame that it comes to that.
It's, you know.
Common sense.
Any other questions or comments regarding this? Would any other council members like to have their name put on this bill? It's your baby, Mike, but you can put my name on if you want. It's a good bill.
By all means, I'll take any and all takers who want to join on.
Okay. Okay, moving on to Bill number 4396.
Bill number 4396, requested by Craig Tokowski, sponsored by councils as a whole, an ordinance establishing new traffic regulations and establishing penalties for violations thereof.
Questions or comments regarding Bill 4396? It's pretty routine, so we'll move on for that. Okay, well, we're going to finish off bills for introduction now. We're done with that. We're going to move on table bills. Is there anyone like to remove a bill from the table?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we remove Bill 4377 off the table.
Second.
All in favor of removing Bill 4377 from the table?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, any questions or comments regarding Bill 4377? For the record, I still don't like the term. I think eight years is too long. But with that being said, if I'm the only person out there, then we move forward with it the way it is. So I think, I think we're now ready to vote on 4377.
Bill number 4377, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a franchise agreement with Union Electric Company, DBA, Ameren Missouri, and Missouri Corporation. Councilmember Brazel?
Yes.
Councilmember Ehlum?
Yes.
Councilmember Hammond?
Yes.
Councilmember Cronin?
Yes.
Councilmember Hollander?
Yes.
Councilmember Klinghammer?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
4377 passes. Yes.
Bill 4359, it's on the table right now.
Yes.
Robert, I -- correct me if I'm wrong, but I thought we were done with that. That was McClay Mansion. Is that a leftover from something else or...
It is a leftover. You approved the preliminary PUD and with a substitute bill. And so this was the original bill and it's...
So it'd be appropriate for us to take it off the table and do what with it?
Well, Keith's thinking is you could leave it on the table and maybe it could...
It'll fall off.
And eventually it falls off and dies.
There's a legal reason for that.
It'll die in 15 meetings. Or you can -- Terry, you're the sponsor, you can get three other people to join you and withdraw it.
I think we ought to just go ahead and withdraw it. We've already done, you know, this has already been discussed.
I'll join with you on that.
Well, let me comment. What you've now got then is a bill that says we're granting the PUD. That's already passed. Then you've got this action that says we're not granting the PUD. That's why I said, "Just let this thing die of its own timeline rather than create things when you walk into a courtroom and one lawyer starts saying, 'Well, ordinance number such and such says it passed.'" But then you later enacted an ordinance that said it didn't pass.
Well, we're not going to say that it doesn't pass. We're just going to withdraw it from consideration.
Well, I just, at the time where it was being considered for taking it off, that's what I was worried about. Now, if Joanne thinks that withdrawing is going to get us past the fantasy I might have created on this...
Just out of curiosity, if we withdraw it, it never existed. Isn't that true?
Right. You can even withdraw it with the notation that it's unnecessary and that the other bill has already passed.
There was a memo that our Wise County Council set out about this that I actually did read, and I think you recommended that time that it be left on, correct?
I did.
Yep.
But if you decide to withdraw it, I think the county council has made a good record for the judge in the future.
Yeah.
I think Joanne's suggestion would be the one we ought to follow. There is some, if your action to withdraw is taken, make reference to the fact that you previously had...
Does anybody know what bill number replaced it?
I think, you know, I think that may be wise to let the three attorneys work this out and we can think about this for the next meeting.
Sure.
Okay?
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Second that? Okay, okay. Any other things, announcements miscellaneous this evening? Take the motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.